All right, the call is Greenhills Council Work Session of July fourteenth, twenty fifteen, Do we, we want to do a prayer for our work session?
Sure, our work session needs blessing. I'll do that. All right. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve. We're grateful to live in a fantastic community and pray that you would bless us and bless our deliberations tonight. Pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Pleasure please to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
What do you want to call it, the role? You can not run here.
Okay. Moore?
Here.
Brocall?
Here.
Dries?
Here.
Halter? Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
And Jeff's running a little late and will be joining us shortly. There you go. Okay, who wants to lead off? Anything you want to say about any of these items?
I'd rather be clean up than done. The only thing that I want to know much about is the trash collection.
All right. If anybody wants to address the park on Dewitt. Did you talk about this, Jack, and Walt, and who's committing Dewitt Court?
Briefly, we try to stay focused on actually the second item relative to Dewitt Court being vacated.
I had some questions. I know last time there was a diagram of where the park was on the original plans and I'm just not picturing it in my mind. Where would it be today?
It's that hot lot park?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, it's actually part of their backyard now and-
Was it ever?
So I think three people ended up buying it in the seventies.
Okay, because, so it wasn't on the Dewitt Court side?
No, it wasn't on the Dewitt Court. It was in back of one of those four unit buildings on Dewitt Street.
Ten, eleven, twelve.
And it touched in the back of, I think it was seventy-five, from the house that we used to own, or the Jerezis lived.
Okay.
Touched on that backyard and went down to Maria's house.
Okay.
So it was down there. So no, it didn't go up to the court.
It also went to twenty-nine.
Yeah, there was, I think, three houses.
It was twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and I believe maybe twenty-three.
And there was a walkway, but I know walkway is ever put in, but there was like a ten-foot easement so you could go from Dewitt Street down to Damon.
Okay.
And it came out just across from, next to her house came out.
I was going to ask if that was similar to that area between Juleb and-
Yeah.
Irvin, on the upper walkway there.
Right, except there was never, the government never put a walkway in, so they never developed it. And when the federal government sold the town, they gave that property to Fienko, or some of the others, went to the village. But a good many of those spaces went to Fienko. Out of court settlement in seventy-seven, the village ended up with some of those. But Fienko sold that property off to the buddy property, which is vacant land, not used for anything. And they sold it, I think, in around nineteen-seventy. Sold a little bit before I got here. About the time the state filed suit against Fienko over the country club property.
I, you know, I, I, I think any discussion regarding the park or, you know, possible development, you know, needs to, obviously, funding, funding is an issue.
Yes.
And I think it goes beyond development, but also how, how do you maintain that? I think that's, seems to be part of the residents' issues is, is who's mowing, mowing what and so on and so forth. I, you know, I, I'm a little concerned that if the park is developed as having a parking lot on it, as, as it was kind of drawn, drawn up in that drawing, that, that may end up being an undesirable gathering spot and I, I would caution those continuing that.
Well, and actually, that drawing was just, the drawing was the parking lot there that is there now. And all that drawing was, was improvement of the space between the parking lot and the buildings. Because if you look closely at the drawing, the front edge of the buildings that used to be there is still there. So that's all that was.
To that, the drawing was when the buildings were still?
In existence. I think, and we have two things here. One, vacating Dewitt Court because we don't really use it as a street, and I guess maybe Yvonne can address that in the next work session, if she's available. My thoughts on the development of that site is if the village was cash flush and could afford to maintain more open space, green space, that's one thing, but since we're not cash flush, I think, yeah, the original intent, when I was the manager, when Jane came in too, was that something would go back in there, you know, whether it be a standalone home, townhouses, some sort of development so that we would end up getting the tax base out of it. If we do tax abatement, like has happened on Dewitt Landing, you know, we get potentially income tax and then when the abatement ends, we get property taxes. And, you know, so anyway, that's my two cents worth of land over there and its own multi-family.
[coughs]
So, you know, multi-family facility could go back in there. One of the companies that we talked to who do historical restoration type of thing, and they had some projects going in here in Cincinnati, we had them look at that facility before they were torn down to see if they were interested in modifying those buildings. And their general consensus was if they were interested in the project there, if we tore the buildings down, they would reconstruct on that same footprint, but instead of a five-unit building, it would be a three-unit building, a two-unit building on the end instead of a four-unit, you know, on the other side, another three-unit building.
And that, that's why we left the footers in originally, right?
Right, yeah. And so, you know, that's, potentially, we end up with eight units in there versus fourteen that we had before. And in that case, then the parking lot may still stay the same, although they were trying to address doing those units with a garage included, so it would have to be modified some. But I think that would be an asset. You know, and we also wanted to develop a corner here of Damon and Drummond, but that's also nice if we can afford it to leave it.
Green space.
Green space.
I think the comments that I heard were the neighbors preliving the past of the pocket park, there was once there. The fact that to stay in green space was almost important to them. They think that, that would reduce the taxes that we're paying right now on it if it's their park. Second, it would be an asset to the existing now PUD because again, because of the green area and the park involvement there. Having said that, there were a lot of people that also expressed the concerns of a building situation because, as example, unless you would put a ironclad guarantee that it will be owner occupied, if it's going to be rented out, it's going to possibly end up like many other places that are rented out and end up being kind of slow, not, not in a year, not in six months, but ten years now, fifteen years down. Even the plushes of the condominiums first thought of has been pretty much become almost an abandoned state because they just rented and run it down. So that's another-
Well, tying, tying in with that concern, we should have been more concerned when we were dumping the properties that the village had right back into the rental market when they were substandard in some ways, so, you know.
But also-
Somebody should have brought that point up.
Also, also in the, the, I attended the NREC Commission meeting and someone brought up the idea also of a pet park. And that they were really liking the thought of that area to become one of the many communities that do have an area where the pets do go and you will have just an area for them there as well, like we did with the skateboard area there, that we put the, the bodies in there for the skateboard, so be it a corner there, kind of a park for, a place for them to go. And there's no place like that for us in here to, to count something like that and everybody pretty much has a pattern too. So that was one of the other parts of the, of the argument of that. They wanted to regain the green spaces they once had. And the second of it, liberating, paying the taxes on that land, we have been paying for it now since two thousand and six or eight, relieving that payment to have to go through that, we tear it apart, we solve that problem right away. We end, we had that one park thanks to the generosity of the family that donated the money for the one that we most recently have dedicated there. And I think that to have it apart would be an asset, like I said, to all the neighbors that own property there and also would enhance the assets to the PUD.
Any else have any comments? I guess we can pull that back maybe for future discussion at least, we've got this out on the table to some extent.
Just my comments on putting a park there. I think we need to ask ourselves, is a park the highest and best use of that space? And I share the concerns with Mr. Lee with regard to funding and maintaining. You know, it's interesting, oftentimes you get opportunities for a grant to build this or make this or create this, or we get some well-intentioned person that says, here's some money for a park bench. And then ten years down the road, we got a gajillion benches and they all need to be painted or they all need whatever needs to be maintained, so I think we need to think holistically about that. I think I heard water runoff as a concern, so whatever we do there, we need to make sure that that's addressed. And then I think we ought to, if, we ought to get some input from residents that live close by there.
I agree with you because-
And not just you, and not just you.
That's okay. That's all the comments that we have, it's not just me, but I'm saying also that the fact that you are on the other side, you don't have the input directly from there, you do need the neighbors that live directly there and would be affected by it. I do agree with you a hundred percent. And also, remember your words, I always think of these words, the pool may not make money, the golf course may not make money, but is it all about the money? Is it also about wellness for the whole community?
Absolutely, absolutely. So you just got to know the price.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Well, and if we left it open, depending on what the neighbors, how neighbors demand, if we could consider an assessment for the immediate area to develop a park or something like that, or to help maintain something.
Well, one rather low, low maintenance answer, certainly not the entire parcel perhaps from the original footprint of the pocket park, is what's called a rain, rain garden.
Correct.
And they're, they're very low maintenance.
Yes.
Certainly reduced.
South of Wayne.
Whatever, mowing would be necessary. And I think, I think there are some funding vehicles.
Correct. And not only that, but many schools have used that as their project to do that very successfully and have won awards by doing that in the communities.
Well, one is around School District, Ohio.
Although it's not close to a school anymore.
What?
Dewitt.
Oh. No, well, yeah.
Get the school kids involved.
I was just going to say, if you need an example-
Yeah, right.
-of Quentinwood Elementary, which used to be-
Teacher?
No.
Oh. Didn't Mayford do something like-
Limp Forest?
No, Limp Forest, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're just going to start talking.
Having, having a break after.
Just okay. Where you at?
Has, has a rain, rain garden. That city owner developed that several years ago.
I believe Sycamore Schools did one, I believe that Vermont did one, I believe that there were several schools that thought that as a project. And they came back and invited city officials and so forth to see their proposal.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to golf carts.
I'm sorry, I apologize for being late. So what is the plan, what's the next step on the first, the first budget document?
When Yvonne comes back, we'll discuss it again.
Okay.
We kind of defer to, we're just throwing out things, what to do with the court.
And it'd be kind of nice if we ever had options, if someone came to us, if they wanted a park, there was funding options, if they wanted to develop it, what, how they wanted to develop it and what did that mean. Be kind of nice to have something to compare it to.
And the possibility of some development, some park at the same time.
I would just add to Glenn's point, you've got to look at all options to make the best decision.
Right, yes, yeah.
And it might make sense to send it to community development for review or someplace, but we can pick out a different one.
And it's also, it's also worthwhile to check for any kinds of grants if open that because I know for a fact that most of the schools, after it was completed, they received a thirty thousand dollar prize for the completion of that because it helped their own community as well.
All right, golf carts.
I was going to say, vacating Dewitt Court, that's just, Yvonne needs to look into it. We might have to stop.
There, there's a draft, draft legislation that basically says Dewitt Court has not been used since Public Street since April two thousand and four.
Where's that?
Where's that at?
This, this came in, it was in laws and rules.
Ah. But no one else, no one else has seen that yet?
She'll bring, she'll bring that forward.
Okay.
Which is present, but it's, it's pretty simple.
And then what are the, what would happen if we vacated it?
What's the advantage to vacating and what's the disadvantage to not?
Well, that's for the discussions.
Okay. I will-
When?
When?
Well, we'll probably do the next work session.
Okay.
Okay.
That's-
Make a note to remind you of that.
For the August fourth, that we call it that then?
Yes.
Fourth session.
Yes. Okay. Golf carts. Anybody want to address that?
Yeah, this, this was another item that was brought up in laws and rules and basically just out of, out of that conversation, this proposed code ordinance was, was drafted. Basically, a lot of this verbiage is already available from other communities that had taken this on. And, you know, the chief had, Yvonne had, has looked it over. But it basically talks, the conversation goes, goes toward each golf cart being inspected and designed to operate within a little, little speed capacity, that the carts would be operated on, on the street, on sidewalks, grass, grassy areas, and that they would be operated by someone at least sixteen years old and having a valid driver's license. There's also some, some verbiage as far as child, travel passengers and normal safety regulations there. So, you know, the idea was to bring this to council and see, see if this was something that you wanted to pursue further or-
I think it's a-
Golf cart community.
Yeah.
We have, we have to be legal as something, we got, we have nothing else here but people. We don't have any commercial or industry or anything like that, so let's just do something that's going to make it nice and simple and, Mike Fielder talked about this, it, gosh, like ten years ago.
Yeah, we did the first comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's right.
Is there anything as far as a definition of a golf cart so that, I mean-
Besides that?
Besides this, because if someone says, hey, I've got my ATV, it's a golf cart to me, you know, I think-
Then you still got to go through the process.
Well, it just has a lot more speed potential and other issues. I, I think we should clearly have it read through in detail.
Well, it, I mean, it is addressed in Ohio revise code, so that's-
Forty-five oh one oh one B.
definitions.
Okay.
I mean, not less than three wheels?
Yeah, because there are, there are, there are still some three-wheel golf carts, which are scary.
It has, it has a single, single wheel, which are not the best.
Um, just wanted to bring up that this bus we can, I was in Columbus area, it was the village's important thing, and Lord have behold, if I did not see golf cars, carts going around on the old section of town, about twenty-five miles an hour zone area, but they all are fully licensed plates by the state of Ohio.
And it says in here that they need to have license plates by the state of Ohio?
Uh huh.
So if they're licensed by the state, why do they also need a free inspection by the chief?
Because the, if you look at what, I, I believe if you look at what Ohio revise code says, has to have a windshield, has to have lights on it, there's some other components that it has to have, and so I think the intent of having somebody inspect it is to make sure that those components are there.
Because they don't do that at the BMV?
Right.
Yeah. Matter of fact, you couldn't even get a golf cart from here to the BMV legally.
Yeah. So that would fall into the police department then?
And that they would require a twenty-five dollar fee for the inspection?
Inspection.
Yes.
That would fall into the city department.
I think that's a splendid idea.
Oh, that is true. Everybody give me up the content of the comments on the golf cart. Just chilling out right there, pulling up,找个place for golf carts.
Would we have to have golf cart parking?
Yes. Probably. Any other comments on that?
Golf cart show.
Take the comment back.
It'll change the parade considerably when we have our golf cart parade as well.
If you notice in the parade, we had quite a few golf carts.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Plenty of them.
Yep.
The only ones that are in the streets.
And the biggest thing is no children can be in them.
Correct.
Okay, we'll get Yvonne to have this prepared for the next meeting. Do the first reading on it. Okay. All right, modifications to the refuse collection code section.
Matthew. What's my turn now? Yeah. Let's see, this goes, this in effect is going to be taking the bonus of the trash fees from the village to the residents. And the way we'll do that is we would contract with Prairie City Water Works, and they would charge us a five percent fee and they would affect the building. Everything would, the village would still go up forbidden and obtain the contract. So everyone will be getting the, the village's rate.
That's right.
Yeah. And the current rate, as I write it out, is nine eighty-eight per month for the garbage. And as this rates at the moment, it would be effective October first of twenty fifteen, and I kind of expect there to be some discussion on the, the implementation date.
Yes. Yes. That will be.
And you, how many UOs are we having collected these days?
Uh, we are at sixteen thirty-four.
About sixteen thirty-four.
Yes.
I, I say to the date, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why wouldn't it coincide with the new contract, which would be March first of twenty sixteen, I believe? I agree.
Now, the only difference for, like the building and whatnot is we would tell Water Works of the new rate. So the argument against that is to go ahead and put it into effect and start to realize the savings as soon as possible.
How much saving do you think we'd have from October to March?
Uh, from October to March, it's going to be about fifteen thousand, it's a little over fifteen thousand per month that the village would save. So it puts it around seventy-six thousand dollars from October to March.
Which is also fifteen thousand dollars that the taxpayers will now have to be paying out of their pocket.
I agree.
Which is why I would prefer to wait until the same amount that the village would be saving is what our residents will be paying.
Paying.
So I would rather give-
Nine eighty-eight a month.
Yeah.
On their water bill.
That hasn't been checked for and, you know.
So it's a double payment, no way?
Well, no, they just haven't budgeted for it, we haven't really talked about it, we haven't gotten it out to the residents.
Right.
And it's two months. And, I mean, it's ten dollars, it's not that much, it's just the fact that we haven't sent out information about it, we haven't-
I agree.
And the fact that the rate's going to change effective March first, when we get the new contract, so.
Does the nine eighty-eight reflect the new rate?
That is the current rate.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I, I had in my notes that the expected new rate was right around ten, ten sixty.
Um, yes, but I, I believe once the new contract starts recycling, it's going to be pumped in with it as well. And I, I, I think it puts it in the up the eleven seventy-five range. That's a really, that's based off of other beds that have gone in the last year or two, so we still, we're not sure exactly what ours will.
How, how many surrounding communities do the residents pay, pay for their, their own garbage?
Probably all of, not all of.
All the townships probably do just about, because the townships traditionally didn't provide that kind of service. People had to contract individually and forest park, the people there had to contract individually. So we just have a long tradition that we provided waste collection because that was one of the jobs. It was a carryover, the federal government had garbage trucks.
Yeah, well.
And we took over, we had garbage trucks. And I, you know, I, I'm not sure what Wyoming does now. And I know my son lives in Madeira and they don't provide waste collection, you have to contract it out yourself with a carrier. And they have multiple carriers that come in, which is not the most efficient way to do things.
And that's made there.
And that's Madeira.
And that's Madeira.
I know Liberty Township, the residents have to contract themselves, there's multiple carriers. And because it's individual contracting, the rate is much higher than eleven dollars per month. However, I just would like to provide more notice.
Well, you know, it's something that the citizens have always gotten to. When we did the last levy, two thousand and ten, it was a police levy and we faced with the same debt issues that we're talking about today. And so we brought up the discussion of that. We also considered doing the same thing to generate the funds. But elected to go with the levy and continue to, to provide that service.
The percentage, percentage of refuge that is recycled, if that percentage goes up from its current stance, does that affect the rate in future negotiations?
I'm not sure.
Probably not. We will get, if they recycle, residents recycle.
Right.
We get a kickback from the county based upon the recycling tonnage. And I don't know if that will still continue. But, and I've, what kind of monies are we getting today from the county on our recycling down here? And what tonnage they allocate to us, do you know what kind of check we get? Um, I don't mind playing. I think they split twice a year and he'll become early as here. I want to say it was for around three, four thousand dollars or ten thousand. So, you know, we have a potential, we might give five thousand dollars back from the county because more people are recycling.
Yeah. Which, which, you know, I would like to add that as a possible incentive in order to keep the rate of the residents to encourage. And since the bids, the bids that went out were included a separate recycle, and as well as.
Correct.
As new containers.
I have two comments. Comment number one, and I'm thinking this aloud. If I remember correctly, the total per year was going to be around a hundred and twenty dollars per household, taxpayer a year. That means it doesn't matter what size of house, anything, but that's the flat rate. I want to bring up the, also the notion that the, since it's passed by the water, unless the owner of a property that is renting out is paying also for the water, that means that person that is renting that particular unit or house has totally found out that he's going to have that payment, that additional payment. With it, that before, it would have never happened because the owner of the property is supposed to pay it, but it comes with the water, so the person is running a place that somebody else owns. So that person is going to find out that that's going to be a hundred and twenty dollars for that renter to pay for that.
Yeah, it depends on how the lease is written. Sometimes leases do say that the landlord will pay for garbage. So how does the landlord now pay for garbage?
The landlord's paying for the garbage through the property taxes.
Yes, yeah.
So the lease says that, and now?
Now the person is going to have to provide a hundred and twenty dollars a year.
Oh, wow.
In the water.
Oh, wow.
Okay, well, that's just an observation. The second observation that I wanted to make, I don't know if I'm just besides thinking outside the box. And I don't know if, I know how much everybody's against any taxes or anything like that. But if we were to put a levy for the two million that we owe, and have that, figure out the numbers from Dustin Root's office, the auditor, and figure out, let's say for a five-year levy, it may come to thirty dollars a year for every taxpayer for the five years, and not the one hundred and twenty. So they still are paying a little bit, would be thirty dollars a year for the taxes included on that levy, and not necessarily a hundred and twenty, but yet they still have the garbage taken care of. We arrived to a point that I know is a known note in that we have to pay it, whether we like it or not. And I just wonder if anybody have entertained that thought. I know we applaud the idea of taxes. But we can have a small levy that would last for five or six years to collect the amount of two million that we need. And yet still have the garbage taken care of and the loss per capita per taxpayer, maybe only thirty, thirty-five dollars a year, not a hundred and twenty.
Do you run those numbers?
I didn't have time, but I'm just figuring out because one, for an eight, for a hundred thousand dollar home, I figured out for eight years, it was going to be about between thirty-five and forty dollars. And I did not get a certified number because they couldn't get back to me from the auditor's office. But I'm just thinking that if we think outside the box, maybe we can have the cake and eat it too.
I'm not, I mean, I think, I think being without debt is a great, great thing that we don't practice much in this country. But, but, you know, that's gonna cost individuals more than the garbage falling over to their responsibility.
Yeah, if you take, maybe I'm misunderstanding something, but if you take sixteen hundred and thirty-four front doors, times thirty bucks, times five years, you only get, you don't even get to a quarter million dollars. So how's that gonna raise two million?
You put whatever amount it is that you're going to do for the two million. It might be fifty dollars, might not be a hundred and twenty, that they have to work out now for the garbage ownership plan. I'm saying like, can we think outside the box and well those numbers?
Well, if you did thirty dollars a quarter, maybe you got times that down by seven more times. So it's, they're actually spending more than a hundred and twenty.
And it would be about two hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah.
I think.
Two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Two hundred and something like that.
What's, 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 what's the number where you have the knowledge?
Uh, I.
Direct to. As long as.
Yeah.
Anything else for several reasons. I can write the numbers on that.
What, what was, what's one mil run through the grace of the village?
Should be sixty-five thousand.
Okay.
I think that's what.
How much would the five mils break through the village, and then how much would it cost each individual?
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I do like the idea of, what other options do we have, if anybody's got suggestions? And, you know, it doesn't hurt to say, hey, what, what, what can we do more efficiently? What can we, you know, what, what options are on the table? But I'm not sure, you know, going around, doing increased tax would be the way to go.
Do, do we have any levies falling off?
Well, actually, we had a couple voted bonds, small miller bond things that have ended.
Yeah, we have the pool coming off, then the streets the next year. And then that's it for voted for quite a while.
Plus the refinancing.
We have the renewal, the recreation one coming up in the fall, am I correct?
So we're looking at next year with the renewal also, something else falling off for the taxpayer property taxes to decrease.
Yes, people all think, everything else being equal, people's tax bill will go down next year because the pool finishes next year and the year after that is the cruise.
And we were just refinanced, so that should work as well. So timing wise, I would be more comfortable starting the timing with a new contract in a year that people are having lower property taxes, personally. Because that way, the village is getting the savings, the homeowners getting the savings on their property taxes. So this won't hurt as much. Again, I know it's, the contract is eleven seventy-five and ends up being twelve thirty-four a month with the five percent. That's not a big chunk of money monthly to me, but I don't know what it is to someone else. So I want to recognize the fact that next year we are having the tax, the property taxes decreasing for the property owners. So moving the rate on to them next year, some of it is more.
How about the merge, the renewal?
At the renewal date, when we have the new contract, so we're not changing the rates.
How about if Matt and I look at that and put together a scenario from a timing standpoint, what that might look like for the owner of a hundred thousand dollar home? Because, you know, we pay our property taxes in arrears. So when the final payment is made, how's that coincide with the march? And there could be some overlap, but maybe we can lay that out as a scenario.
And then this way we have time to get it out to the public, let them know it's coming, why it's coming. And it's not two months from now, it's enough time to educate and.
I, I want to be sensitive to, to that, but we're talking about three dollars a week for the, for a household. And I don't, I want to be sensitive to somebody that is really struggling financially and may have been out of work for an extended period of time or has had changes in their personal thing. But things do change and things.
Right, but I do think we owe as much communication to the.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we end up arriving to the point of, okay, we're going to do this, do we have a time limit on this? So we're going to say, when, when are we getting off from this and give it back to the people? I think that's also important for them to know that they.
That's on the table every year, I think, because we do a budget every year.
When you say give it back, are you talking about taking garbage back?
Yes, yes. So maybe say, we're, we're looking at this for the next three years or for the next, you know, whatever it is to give them a.
I, I don't know if we.
I don't wanna hold. I think it's always on the table to look at, but I don't think necessarily that we can make a promise that, hey, in whatever year this debt is.
And if we said that, nobody'd believe it, because what government agency has ever done?
Contingent on the estate debt.
Yeah, I mean, we, the year that we pay that off, maybe the year that we have to plump down some additional money on a down payment on a new fire engine. Or, you know, we have some infrastructure things that we have to do.
Well, and if we look at the trend, the state is taking more away from us. And at least it's moving in that direction. So I think we have to be realistic.
And do you know if we have a general fund levy up to renew it next year?
Next year?
In sixteen?
Yeah. I think we do, but I'm not positive. We have two general fund levies that we have to renew every five years. But I don't know when the next year comes up. So we still want to keep our residents supportive of the actions that we take and renew our levies to. All right, now, you explain to me how we're gonna get all the information to people besides doing flyers.
Uh, well.
Greenhouse Journal.
I'm just talking about what you guys saying, hey, it gives us more time, March, to go ahead and do that, as opposed to doing it here in the next two months. I mean, flyers would be the only thing you can actually put on their door, and if they want to read it, they'll read it. Then what else can you do? You go around with a foghorn, let everybody know this, what's gonna happen?
Mention it at the Concert on the Commons.
Oh, for sure.
Mention it at any of the, let me sneeze, any of the shops that are willing to have a flyer. Have set times if people have questions.
So, but, give a time to filter.
Yes, yes.
Because people, people actually talk about it more than what they're gonna actually read or see. They'll hear from other people as time goes on.
Yeah, someone hears about it at the Concert on the Commons and mentions it to their neighbor. Someone sees it in the Greenhouse Journal and then mentions it up at the Troubadour when they're having.
Oh, they put it online, or what do they call that thing on? Is that Juneale dot com? Yeah, put it on Juneale dot com. Everybody.
We can have it on our website.
On our website, yeah.
All right, well, Glenn and.
Matt.
Glenn with some things. And actually, there were a couple other changes in here. And there was something that wasn't changed that I saw that we had in here that I would like to suggest that we may not, in case Jane Barry would come back. The section where it says. She emailed me the other day.
Did I?
Yes.
I didn't get anything.
Oh, link them. Anyway, section nine thirty-nine point oh five. Containers may be set up after three, the day before collection. I know that was changed because Jane cited some senior citizens. And, but the section where it says should be removed by, from the streets by eleven o'clock on the day of the collection. And that actually, I think, should be changed because there are people who work. Sometimes the garbage truck goes by after you've left for work. And so unless you hire somebody to bring in your garbage, your cans are gonna be out there until you get home from work. But it says eleven P M. Oh, I'm sorry.
But that still could happen if you're a second shift worker.
Right.
And you leave at noon or.
So make it for the next day at the same time or?
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't make.
Maybe it's twenty-four hours after pickup or something. And I'm not a fan of garbage cans laying around on every planting strip there is. But, you know, I get a little incensed and I've had more than one call up here to say, hey, it's Saturday morning, there were cans all over the place here. And I'm calling, leaving a message or saying, hey, Monday morning, you need to get in the car and go for a ride and get some letters out to people to say, get the cans in.
I, I think more than like, more likely is the recycle bins seem, seem to be the very last thing that are emptied in our, our neck of the woods.
Yeah.
They get the big, they get the big cans, but the recycling comes, sometimes it's, you know, noon.
Yeah.
And on another side of the street, when, on Andover, my recycling was picked up before seven.
Yeah, mine is too.
Maybe we say within twenty-four hours of when the trash has been picked up.
Because I know like sometimes they miss the recycling and they have to come back and people have to leave them out until the next day for them to get it. I mean, hopefully, when we get the new contract and get bigger recycling units, maybe they won't miss the tiny little red, bright.
We had some, we had a little problems and they were the sort of people that got tickets or, or.
Letters.
Announced letters. Well, the recycle was not picked up. It was six o'clock in the afternoon, the recycle was not picked up. They went back inside the house because they want to get the letter or whatever it is. Although they were told by the office, leave it out because they may pick it up as late as Saturday. So they were so afraid to get then the actual ticket that they just put everything back inside.
And, well, also tied in with considering this change, and I've talked to Yvonne about this some, and maybe we've mentioned it here before. But when, when we go to the new contract and everybody ends up with two containers, for sure, and especially if everybody ends up getting a larger recycling container, although we're talking about maybe still giving a small container to people, possibly.
Yeah, the red, the red bins.
But those people in those one-bedroom units with no real storage, you know, all the one-bedrooms have that little room in the front, which will handle a small garbage can, but it won't handle the ninety-gallon ones. And of course, those people, some of those people that live in those units probably don't generate ninety gallons of garbage in a month anyway. So we're gonna have some issues on those particular units, I feel. And, and, and the center townhouses.
Is that resolvable if they do allow me to have the red bins still?
I think that would be fix it.
Not if the garbage waste containers.
But if everybody goes to the, if we, if, if the contract ends up that we all have ninety-gallon trash cans, then we have that issue of, you know, screening the trash cans, so we're.
Because it'll be fire.
You know, if we come up and march and say, you have to take this garbage can and you have to pay us extra, and then you have to put a fence up to hide the garbage cans, there are gonna be some people that aren't gonna be real happy. Some people have already done some fencing.
Is there?
But it's one hide a ninety-gallon one, because our fencing.
I brought that up at the zoning meeting that we had.
Although my feeling is, I think the taller fence looks worse than seeing the very top of a ninety-gallon cart. So if you drive by and you, you know, because we have. So if you drive by and you, you know, because we have a fence ordinance generally that says, no fences over four feet in the front.
In the front, four feet in front, six feet inside.
In which case we'd have to.
So, and in the, the old days, the reasoning for the fence was to hide what spilled out with smaller cans that they had. But the gar, the big ninety-gallon ones, you don't generally have spill out unless you've got the raccoons getting out.
Yeah, I was gonna say the raccoons.
So.
Is that the only garbage cans allowed then? None of the other garbage cans can be put out?
We don't know yet for sure.
Okay, cause that could cause a problem also, the limitation for some of the areas that would have a larger facility.
Yeah.
Um, if you cannot bring up something else out.
Or you don't have Christmas.
The other thing is, when I ask him how much billing, um, I know we have some houses that people don't live in.
Yep.
But when you remodel for somebody.
Oh, yeah.
Like, right now, we're paying for garbage collection conceivably for that house and they've never been in there and they haven't put a garbage can out in fifteen years. I don't know if he has his water turned on. Um, the house that, uh, is next door to me.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he hadn't, he didn't have his water turned on, hadn't been paying his water bill, didn't have a water bill because he didn't get water for twenty years. And yet, the village, the way we're doing it now, is paying for garbage. So, you know, those, those people would fall on the garbage trails. I guess we could reduce that for the rookie then, we don't, in fact, get any money because somebody is on the water system.
I know with water bills, if someone doesn't, well, it's, if they don't get a water bill, it's a problem. But if they don't pay the water bill, it can be assessed for their property tax. But you're right, if they don't get a water bill, they don't have fresh.
And there's probably, there's probably only half a dozen in town like that.
Not yet, not even. Most people try to keep some kind of water there.
And we have, uh, probably, uh, now, I bet we're close to at least six hundred rental units in town. Uh, maybe a little more. And so a portion of those, the landlord probably pays the water bill, a portion tenant pays the water bill.
I think that's just a reason that we need to communicate well and them figure it out themselves.
And my guess is all the landlords are trying to make everybody pay all the water bills if they can.
I was thinking.
Increase the rent accordingly.
All right, yeah.
It might be a incentive to buy a house, breaking.
Okay, anything else on this? And, okay. Jack, you have anything else you want to bring up?
Uh, no, sir, that's funny.
Is that what?
Uh, no, just some discussions, maybe the next one session, the bonds here.
Thirty thousand, right? Since you've been up here for the last hour, almost.
We haven't had a finance and audit committee meeting, uh, recently. Everyone should have gotten a audit letter, or I believe everyone got a letter.
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
So if you haven't returned it, please do so.
I did. Did I get one?
You saw yours upstairs.
Oh, oh, okay.
And, uh, just for everyone's sake, the general fund, year over year is up three point one six percent. Um, and, uh, we have expended forty-five percent of our appropriation through Jim. So, um, we're in a, I would describe it as we're in a tight budget and we're, um, adhering to our budget. Good summary?
Yeah, sir. Would you want to attempt to schedule a finance, ready meeting soon?
Yeah, let me, um.
Do you have a schedule of that?
Potential, or do you want me to email you?
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, no, it's fine.
Well, what, Larry, do you have anything to tell us to bring up?
Uh, just wanted to bring up the, the, um, street and services, uh, leading, committee meeting is July the twenty-seventh. I also wanted to bring up that August the nineteenth is the Hamilton County Releasable League and it's in conjunction with Warren County as well as Hamilton County. I also wanted to make aware that, um, there has been going on for all summer, a forum for education. Uh, the next meeting is going to be on July the thirtieth. And, um, that includes any, what is called the Wyndham Road corridor. So that includes, um, none of the Wyndham Woods, but the Math Academy, also, um, Phoenix Town as well. Um, and that is on July the thirtieth. And if I may say something, maybe I'm just totally off the field in here, but I kind of might note to hear that we were going to mention something or talk something about the uniforms and bright cleaning bills or anything like that. Were we going to have that on the work session or, cause it was not given to a particular committee or anything like that? It was brought up.
This, this was about the, you know.
The budget, yeah.
The budget.
And I think Yvonne was gonna look into something, probably with all the distractions of the last, uh, two weeks. I'm sure she hasn't been able to.
Okay, uh, is that, they, that's not, that's not, I assume the law some rules, uh, that it was on the continuum of the, the entry handbook? I don't know if that's still there or, did you assign it to anybody else? I, I didn't hear that.
No, no. And, uh, and it could be discussed, uh, because it's a fringe benefit of the service department employees. So it could be discussed, service and streets to.
Okay, do you want me to put that in, um, finance?
Well, um, let's, uh, let's discuss that with Yvonne and, uh, let's have her address that because we don't want to make it look like we're going to take something away from employees to have a benefit now. Because after we had that discussion in council, um, the last regular meeting, uh, service department employees were aware of it very next day and making comments with Yvonne, and I don't know if they made a comment to Matt about it, but I got the impression that we're going to try to do something. So if we take that benefit away from them, I definitely think that we should equalize that benefit in other compensations.
I, I think it, my thought would be if we did something, it'd be going back to uniforms where we would have to provide it. So I, I was looking at it against the cost benefit of providing the uniforms or against providing the allowance. It's how I, I was looking at it as taking it away. So that's the reason I thought finance, because I, I wasn't thinking taking it away. I was thinking switching it back to providing a uniform.
You had mentioned, um, when I brought it, um, Diana brought it up and then I had made a comment. Um, you mentioned that it's common practice in other locations. The only thing I'd like to encourage us to do, there was a number of other comments that came, uh, to me afterwards. But when I bring it up, it's not so much, or somebody brings up something, it's not so much always to make a stance in saying, I'm already committed to this or not committed. I encourage us to actually have a dialogue and get all the, all the thoughts on the table um, so we can collectively see what makes sense. And there, and it, it's a part in a science, I think, you know, you have to look at it and say, well, is, is this common practice? Where are we as a village? You know, we've got, you know, expensive, we have to just look at it. We also have to be at a place, though, that, um, we're treating our employees fairly and, and going with what going market rate is or we'll be replacing them, you know?
And she can use the Center for Local Government to survey what other communities do.
I mean, it, it really opens up the whole thing of like, how are they compensated compared to other places? And, I mean, it's the whole, or, you know.
Traditionally, most of those allowances like that are a benefit in effect for taxes. So we're paying taxes.
And now they're taxable but not pensionable. Fun stuff.
Okay. Bringing up the rear?
Oh, no, I don't like the rear. I'm fine.
Good decoration.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're ready to adjourn?
Uh, we're, twenty-eighth at six o'clock is finance audit.
Good.
What is that, sorry?
The twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?